Good evening, everyone. We will call a special city council meeting to order for a meeting of the Vision Fund Committee. First item of business is roll call.
Scott Peterson. Doyle. Louis Roberts. Wright. Laurenti. We have quorum.
Thank you. We have a quorum and now we will have Colette Keith from the Black Hills Unitarian Universalist Fellowship lead us in the invocation.
Good evening, Mayor Sam Quaker, honorable city council representatives, community elders, community war veterans, community members and relatives. Colette Keith Meeh, I am a co-leader at the Black Hills Unitarian Universalist Fellowship. We are a fellowship with a 30-year tradition in the Black Hills and you have an open invitation to join us any Sunday afternoon that you wish. Chante washte nape chiu zape. I greet you with a warm heart and a warm handshake. One of the main tenets of Unitarian universalism is to honor the inherent worth and dignity of every person. It is with that value that I ask the great mystery to bestow on each and every one of you this evening, the good health, the great peace, the mercy and love necessary for you to remember in all of your decisions and service work, the inherent worth and dignity of those from all nations, for those who are poor and have little voice, for those who struggle against disease, for those who would be lifted by your most perfect smile and greeting. In this season of spring and renewal, may the great mystery wrap his and her loving, tender and vast arms around you and your relatives and go forward with you in all your humanness. Thank you.
Tonight is a meeting of the Vision Fund Committee, which is, which is set up by ordinance as a committee of the city council and does not include the mayor as a voting participant or the chair. All recommendations from the committee will ultimately come to either Public Works or Legal and Finance, which are two subsidiary committees of the city council and then ultimately to the city council. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to hear brief updates from each of the projects, from the outstanding projects from the 2005 and 2010, also known as Phase Three and Four of the Vision 2012, now known as the Vision Fund. So I will turn the gavel over to Bonnie Peterson to chair the meeting.
We will start. We have our first item on the agenda and we're allowing right now 10 minutes for presentations. Many of the presentations will be very brief, but those that might be longer, we're hoping we can do it in 10 minutes. So number one, the downtown parking ramp, Presidential Plaza, Hanny Shaffey.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the council. I'm here to report to you about the downtown parking ramp, which is at the corner of Fifth and St. Joe and what has turned out to be a multi-use facility on that parcel of ground that the city had vision for it since the mid-'70s and the goal was to provide parking for the downtown and revitalize downtown. We are involved with that project and we've been involved in it for quite a better time and we have just a little bit of an update, if you would please. Okay, cool. Thanks. The project has materialized into approximately a little over 500 parking spaces and also 15-story building, as you're aware. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on the project, but I'm going to give you just a little bit of the status so we could leave some time for the other folks who may need a lot more detail in their projects. This is some, these are some views of the project. It has basically condos, parking, retail and also a convention center or conference center within the downtown. This is a view of the building looking from Skyline Drive, looking east, and this is a view looking towards Skyline Drive from the east. This is some sort of a site plan with the building and the landscaping around it and this is the, actually the level above the parking stalls, which is basically a pad you in front of the conference center and some sort of hotel condo recreation area. The cost of, the square footage for the building is approximately 407,000 square feet. I believe we have a contract with the city to do a minimum of approximately 185,000 square feet. The size is basically intended to have the maximum impact on the downtown. One of the largest components, of course, is the parking structure and then the rest of the components are as listed. The President's Plaza will have a hotel of about 84,000 square feet and that is actually the management company for the hotel is already assigned and negotiated with. The President's Plaza will also have about 32 condos and 22 of those have been spoken for. So actually the number is 26 right now, but this, since this presentation was done about more than 30 days ago. The retail, about 39,117 of the 57,000 have been actually spoken for. As far as percentages-wise, you know, these are the percentages for the commitments that have been made or some preliminary commitments that have been made for the structure. As you know, this is waiting for the new market tax credits and this, this project is located within a new market tax credit census district, which has certain qualifications that are needed. We are aggressively proceeding with a new market tax credit. As you know, the Congress has approved those allocations. We have so far spent on soft costs in the project, $1,565,000 and we're actually spending money as we speak. As a matter of fact, we just had a teleconference phone call around three o'clock regarding this project and we're flying to St. Louis in about eight days to do some other deals as far as that goes for the new market tax credits. We are, you know, the goal for the vision is actually, there has been a commitment for $2.8 million from the Vision Fund for the project and that is going only towards the parking ramp. You know, the cost of that parking ramp is actually far in excess of what is being approved for the, for, by the TIF and we'll be more than happy to show you those numbers. We actually have actual contract with a contractor on that, on that cost. So we're proceeding forward. This is not our first project. We've been able to deliver a few projects in the community and we've been doing them really quality projects and quick in time and we've been involved in the planning and what have you and others. I'm here to answer any questions you may have and I want to leave a little bit of time for the other folks that are here, but if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaffey, and I think what we've decided to do is we will have discussion and questions and take action on, at number six. So we will hear the first five, but it shouldn't take you very long.
Thank you.
Thank you. Soccer, Rapid City.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. I'm Roger Telling-Huson, spokesman for Soccer Rapid City. And it seems like it was about a year ago that I was here for the first time on behalf of Soccer Rapid City to make a presentation to you and I'm happy to report that a lot of things have happened. There's been a lot of miles put on, figuratively at least, to bring this project to reality. Since, I know that you all have a copy of the written report that we put together and I'm hoping that that will be more all-inclusive and informative than the few minutes I intend to spend up here tonight, but I just want to tell, hit some of the highlights, if I can, about where we've been and where we still hope to go. We've worked very hard since we met with you last time to put together a design proposal that will fit within the budget that we believe the city is graciously making available to us. We've worked very hard at that and it's not an easy feat to accomplish the creation of, literally, new park space with limited resources. But the plan that we have that we believe will work is calls for the creation of 12 soccer fields to start with, which would use about half of the available land that we have out on North Elkvale Road and those 12 fields would be designed in such a way that the remaining half of the property would be available to be expanded upon someday down the road as money becomes available. But the 12 fields that are being proposed would include not only the fields, but also parking for 600 vehicles. It would also include wastewater or catch area for water, drainage water, stormwater, if you will, and also turnouts or passing, or turn-in lanes, if you will, off of Elkvale Road into the facility. One of the challenges that we've had, obviously, and I know you're all aware of this and I think we're going to talk about it a little later, is irrigation and water availability, but I'll leave that for Terry, I think, to talk about. I'm told that that's going to come up a little later. I want to talk just for a brief moment about our fundraising efforts. To raise the kind of money that Soccer Rapid City has set as its goal to raise, to supplement the money that the city is making available to us, we've settled upon a fundraising scheme that involves the use of a professional fundraising group, consulting group, called the Abbey Group. They have offices here in Rapid City and in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and our principal consultant that we've been working with is a gentleman by the name of Michael McNeely. We've set a fundraising goal for ourselves of between a million and $2 million. We have a case plan that's been formulated. We have a fundraising group that has been identified and put together and I can tell you that we're very close to begin the, what I refer to as the quiet phase of a fundraising campaign. I've had the opportunity to be involved with a fundraising campaign at Black Hills State University, the foundation up there. We're currently engaged in a large capital campaign and so the fundraising consultant that we've used in that effort comes with the same exact recommendations that the consultant that we're using right now comes with, and that is that we start out identifying, first of all, our committee, which we've now done. We have put together our case plan, which we are almost completed with, and we are identifying prospective donors. Then we will begin our solicitations, but only when our consultant believes that we're ready to do that because we don't want to ask folks to contribute $5 if maybe they're able to and willing to contribute 10. So that's, there's a real science to this, I'm finding out, and we're excited to be at the point that we're at and we hope that in the course of the next couple of months, we're going to see some real progress in this, in this area. I just want to tell you that, you know, this group, this fundraising group that I've had the opportunity to work with is very excited about this project. I know I stood here a year ago and told you that I was really excited about it, but I can honestly tell you that the group that has been put together to raise the funds that will go along with the city's money is very excited and very optimistic that we're going to be able to put together a wonderful program and plan for the city of Rapid City, something that you can be very, very proud of. And we believe that there's some real economic benefits that will come to the city as a result of a soccer complex like this and we're just looking forward to having the opportunity to actually see some dirt get moved and some infrastructure starting to be put into place. And so with that, Madam Chairman, I'd be happy to stand by for questions and I hope that you'll have some questions for us that we can further illuminate what we're trying to do here. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Johnson, were you just, were you part of the presentation or were you just wanting to weigh in to support?
I'll say it's relevant. The council, everybody, it's relevant. Just give me three minutes.
Thank you. Appreciate being here tonight. Norton Johnson with the Black Hills Badlands Tourism Association, 73-year-old organization promoting tourism in the Black Hills area. I'm also a member of the Dakota Fields Dreams to Reality Group. You all have a hard copy of a letter that I'm about to read and just want to share some thoughts with you on the Dakota Fields project. First of all, what an opportunity for Rapid City. The fact that you have the potential to leverage funds from the Vision pile and privately raise dollars to construct this project is only a dream for most communities. The city investment in oversight and water will show a great return as tournaments come to town, boosting event revenues and creating future destination tourists as families return to our region after experiencing Rapid City and the surrounding area when they're here for tournaments. Secondly, the primary use of the fields will be soccer. This activity doesn't know socioeconomic boundaries or cultural or political differences. As our economy expands in Rapid City and in the Black Hills and more staff and families are needed to come and service growing businesses and new businesses, soccer will be a unifying sport and healthy activities for families of all ranks and files. The complex will be a cornerstone in promoting healthy family lifestyles for generations to come. In an age where Xbox and eye devices are king and queen, Dakota Fields will provide exercise, sunshine and family time for thousands of locals and visitors alike. Final brief point, the benefit to the citizens of Rapid City by expanding and improving the infrastructure north of exit 61 on the leadership of the Dakota Fields project is outstanding. The area is quickly growing, ripe for more development and the improvements made now will clearly have benefit for other imminent projects. And as a proud member of Dakota Fields Dreams to Reality Group, I'd urge your full support for the project going forward. And off-script, I'll share that I spent 10 years as a city councilperson in Minnesota before I moved out to the Black Hills. The work that's been done for over a decade now to grow a vision fund and the ability to partner with private donated dollars to make something like this happen that has so many benefits from so many angles is really unique and I hope that you're all willing to step up and take advantage of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our list, we have the Ada Pow Wow facility, but unfortunately, we received a note from Daphne Richards Cook that she had an unexpected death in the family and so she's not going to be able to make it. So we, council can look at the notes and we'll have to have them rescheduled to come back. So we will move to number four, street reconstruction projects. Mr. Walter Storff.
Madam Chair, I'm going to stay seated for this one. I just had a real brief memo that was attached and there was about $200,000 remaining in this particular item, which we do plan on utilizing on the next phase of Kansas City Street, which we'll be bidding here in April. That portion runs from Fifth Street over to East Boulevard.
Okay, thank you. Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Council. Alex D. Smith, landscape designer, Parks and Recreation. Like Terry, I had a real brief memo for this one as well. This was the Vision Fund Phase Three projects for Parks and Recreation and all funds have been completed, all projects have been completed, all funds have been spent. And I'd ask, respond to any questions, if you have any, on the projects attached.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so now is our time that if we have questions and all that we, well, let's start. Okay, I thought what we would do, I would imagine a lot of these, that we would probably just acknowledge the report. So based on that, can you tell me which ones you want to do more than that with before? So we'll kind of do it like our consent calendar. So which ones do you want to pull and discuss? Mr. Sasso?
Soccer.
Okay. Any others besides soccer? Mr. Nordstrom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Number one, parking ramp.
Okay, so we have one and two. We have soccer and the parking ramp. Okay, right, we'd have to continue number three, so, okay. Well, let's go ahead and take care of number three. Can I get a motion for the Ada Pow Wow facility to continue?
Move to continue.
Okay, Doyle first and Roberts was second. Okay, and then a motion for four and five? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm always forgetting to vote. Okay, those in favor say aye. Okay, those against, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Continue the Ada Pow Wow. Okay, can I have a motion for number four and five?
Move to acknowledge.
Okay, move to acknowledge both of those. Those in, any comments, questions? Okay, those in favor say aye. Those against, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Okay, so let's stick with, go back up to top with Mr. Hanny Shaffey with the parking ramp and any questions from council? Okay, we have a motion to acknowledge, first from Doyle and second by Louis. And Mr. Nordstrom, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could ask a question of Mr. Shaffey, please.
Certainly.
Mr. Shaffey, we've been having a conversation about, especially in the Public Works Committee meetings, about the, let me just say it as a hypothetical, that will not happen because I'm very anxious and very much looking forward to this project taking place, but the hypothetical that will not happen is Plan B for the new market tax credit. What's the next step, should that not get granted this cycle, this quarter?
Well, if I may, Madam Chair, we are confident that we're going to get some new market tax credits this cycle, so far, from all indications and from all the conversations that we've been having with our broker and with the CDEs that we've been contacting. So hopefully, there will not be any Plan B, but if there is a Plan B, you know, you know, there is, I don't anticipate it, I really don't, because if there is a Plan B, it would be basically downsizing the project if there is no new market tax credit, but will still be a large project, not as large as what we presented, but hopefully, that will never happen, you know, and we're shooting for that not happening.
And I just want to be clear that we do still have some time left to go on your current TID district on it, so the TIF can still be used in some fashion, knowing that we will get the new market tax credits, but the hypothetical is if they're not there, we will have to do that, I understand, but you've got some brokerage firms out there that are assisting you on this. Can you, yes, go ahead. It looks like I'm getting ready to interrupt.
No, no, go ahead, please.
Yep. No, I was just curious about your brokerage firm, how they're doing, what reports and progresses they're giving back to you.
They have been contacting quite a few CDEs and actually, we just finished a final document with a lot of the financing package that they requested to send to quite a few other CDEs and those packages are going out, I believe, tomorrow. They're waiting for a final audited report from the accounting firm that evaluated and audited all the data on the project to make sure that is a viable project, addressing all those questions that were raised by the CDEs and everything came out to be really great, positive and consistent with what has been required, so it's good.
And I want to be just very clear on this next part of it is that the next cycle on the new market tax credit is when?
Next year.
Next year.
Congress has approved two cycles of new market tax credits and I believe each one of them was 300, $3.5 billion, one for this year and one for next year. The Treasury will finish the allocations to which CDEs that this money goes to in the next few weeks and that's why we're scrambling with CDEs and addressing any questions and trying to line up for those CDEs as they get the allocations.
Thank you, Hanny. I'll yield the floor.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for comments? Okay, we have a, thank you, Mr. Shaffey.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor to acknowledge. All in favor, say aye. Those against, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Okay, questions for the Soccer Rapid City? Questions, comments or a motion? We'll see, well. Mr. Wright, you have the floor.
And the funding is adequate to get our infrastructure needs in that we see needed and necessary for this project, so they have a viable field, correct?
Madam Chair, if I could, I'd say the answer is yes and no. We are getting the turning lanes on Elkvale Road, we are getting the water main, the 16-inch water main extended up Elkvale. The sewer main is not going to be extended at this time. They're going to put a holding tank in. They would connect at a future date when additional development in the area warrants the extension of the sewer, so they're going to have to pump. The other thing that is not addressed in this current plan is, and I think Roger Teller-Huson alluded to it earlier, they are not proposing to use raw water for irrigation purposes, they're proposing to use treated water for irrigation purposes.
What's the estimate cost for a sewer line? Do we know?
I don't have that number in front of me right now.
Cost per sewer?
I'm looking for help out here. Do you know, Mike?
No, we never, that was never produced because in order to...
Could you come up to the mic, please, so we can, people at home can hear what you're saying? Thank you.
I'm Mike Twoam with Forefront Design. That number was never produced just because that would include an entire road, we would have to completely reconstruct the entire road because of the depth needed on the sanitary sewer.
Madam Chair, if I could, I just want to expand a little bit. There was a limited number of dollars here that we were given to try to produce a workable project that's usable by the Soccer Association, so I think, in my mind, kudos to How It Works staff, Rod Johnson, the staff from Forefront and the Soccer Association to try to do as much as they can with the dollar amounts that are given to us, but there's, there's a few things that we just, the money's just not there to do. So one of them that had to be tossed out was the extension of the sewer main. In order to extend the sewer main, something else had to give and there just was nothing else to take away from this particular project. It's kind of bare bones if you look at the estimate. In fact, the concession stands, maintenance building, those are all things that are getting passed on to the Soccer Association. The other thing was the raw water wells out at the site. That's something that as they got into design, the termination was made that, based on the funding levels, that's not something we're going to be able to produce right now. I will say this, they did do some investigation into some more economical shallow alluvial water sources. They met with the staff from the USGS out there and it just was... They met with the staff from the USGS out there, and it just was determined there was not going to be adequate sources of water there. So, the next option is go to deeper wells, whether that's... We know we're going to spend about a million dollars to produce those wells out there. We just never went into the detail and estimates to determine the exact dollar amount. We already, we know it's going to be probably at least a million. We just don't know whether it's going to be in the Indian Cara Aquifer or the Madison Aquifer. Either way, we knew we didn't have the money to produce it, so based on the current funding source. Now, as a Pulp Works Director, I'll tell you, obviously, I would prefer to not use treated water for irrigation, obviously. But based on the funding right now, unless you want to look at alternate funding sources for some stuff here, what the Soccer Association and Forefront has presented is what we can do to provide a usable project. I know we've had some discussions late this afternoon about maybe some alternate funding source for the water supply. If you look at the estimate they provided you, we're estimating $640,000 for the water main. That's the 16-inch water main that's going to run up Elkville Road. Now, potentially, we could look at an alternate funding source, the SAB Utility Support Fund, to fund that and recoup those costs through construction fees. That would free up some money that we could at least do some additional investigation on, more detailed investigation on the use of a raw water system out there. I personally think that's something we should probably take a look at. But moving forward, to be honest with you, this plan is short of additional funding from somewhere. This is what we're left with.
We don't have a motion on this yet, do we?
No, we do not.
I'll make, if I can.
You can't make a motion at this point.
Let me finish by saying that I would appreciate a motion that supports this as is laid out, but we publicly acknowledge that the sewer line is not included and will have to be funded at a later date. And it also does not include a raw water source. Is that fair? So, we have, we are acknowledging the fact, we're going to have to spend some money later.
Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve the project as currently, it's currently under construction with the stipulation or the addition of up to $650,000 from the Support Utility Fund for the water main. And I'd like to maintain the floor for a second. I just appreciate staff working very hard to make this work and working with Soccer Rapid City and going out of the way to make this happen. It's a big shot in the arm for our economy. I think this is going to make a big difference for all the different sports, organizations out there that are looking for places to play, lacrosse, hockey, not hockey, excuse me, rugby, the polo fields, all those different organizations, youth football, they're all looking for a place to play, and so this is going to free up a lot of area for them in the future to use those fields. So, I appreciate everybody making this effort to make this happen. I think it's going to be a great thing for our community, and I do appreciate the staff's hard work on this, and I think we'll move forward with it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Ms. Doyle, did you want to speak? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Sasso?
Thank you. Question for Terry Walterstorf. If we were looking at city water, what would our, based on the, you know, dozen soccer fields, how, approximately, how much would we be looking at paying for untreated water annually? I know it's a tough ballpark to go into.
I can get you a pretty close number, actually, based on... Forty Second Design Studio did some analysis last year when we were looking at the Memorial Park irrigation and use of raw water. So, we got some good estimates on the amount of water needed for turf irrigation. Based on those numbers, about 30 acres for the first 12 fields, and our current water rates for irrigation charge, it's about $125,000 a year worth of water.
That's a lot of water.
It is a lot of water. I will say this, the Water Enterprise Funds provides about $1.6 million of water at no charge to city departments and other recreational facilities in the city. It, we provide a lot of water. You know, obviously, I've had conversations in past meetings about my thoughts on that, and ultimately, it goes back to the ratepayers. But keep in mind that soccer's not in, they're not standing alone here, and to isolate them from everybody else probably wouldn't be fair. I don't want to say they're a drop in the bucket, but they're just a piece of the pie here.
And at the same time, if we're looking at, we're looking at building something still, that's new, and I think if there's any possibility for us to do it the right way and to not use treated water and not be, if we can do it any which way without the treated water more cost-effective in the long run, and I think that's the challenge, is what we're looking at, short run versus long run, as far as with the watering for the fields. I think everybody sees that, you know, using the treated water is going to be a lot cheaper in the short run, but when you start looking at how much money annually out of that enterprise fund, and because that, even though all projects do tap into that water right now, we've been having a lot of discussions in Public Works of how do we break away from that? How do we be more cost-effective and looking at going green? So, you know, I know I would like to see that, I think, as far as moving forward, I think it would be well worth our while to continue exploring options and seeing what can be done and possibly getting a little better price tag on what we'd be looking at for the wells. The other, the other thing, just unrelated to the water, just, I love the name Dakota Fields, but also, I suggested the possibility of looking at selling naming rights as another way of raising additional funds. Yes?
Madam Chair, thank you for that, Councilman Sasso. Dakota Fields Dreams to Reality is really the moniker that we've come up with for our fundraising effort. We've, at the suggestion of the mayor, we've trademarked it. I just got the trademark certificates back today, so we're protected in that regard. But I will, I will tell you that as part of our fundraising plan, we hope that we can attract substantial donors with the prospect of having an opportunity to have some naming opportunities, recognizing, of course, that any naming opportunities have to come back to the council for specific review and approval. But Dakota Fields is not necessarily going to be the name of this complex. It's really the name we've adopted for purposes of our fundraising effort. And as I said in the report, we intend to keep all of our donated funds, as we raise them, segregated from other Soccer Rapid City funding. And so, we can always account to our donors as to how much was donated and show them that it was put to the specific use for which the donation was made. We've made arrangements with Black Hills Community Bank and Kaitlyn Thorsonson to do both, be the holder of our funds and also the auditing arm of our fundraising effort. So, thank you for the question, and I hope that we can come back to you and say we have someone or an entity that's willing to donate a very large amount of money in exchange for having an opportunity to name a part of this complex, and we'll bring that back to you with a big smile on our face.
Thank you very much. And as I, I will yield the floor shortly, but I definitely would like to see if somebody would make an amendment to the motion on the floor to at least be exploring use of untreated water for this project. I think it, I do believe it's worthwhile, but, so, I'll yield the floor.
Okay. Charlene, could you tell us the motion, please? So, we know what the motion was. Mr. Lewis, could you repeat your motion again? Verbatim.
Yeah, pick on the ADD guy, okay. Am I going to ride bikes?
I was pre-.
My motion was to approve the plan as has been, to continue forward with as the plan has been already approved, I guess, with the addition of $650,000 from the Support Utility Fund for the water main and the continuation of the exploration of wells for the site. That sound good? That's, I think that's what I said before, I'm pretty sure, spot on.
Sorry, I had missed that last end part.
We made a motion to approve the current plan we have before us, plus with the addition of the money, 650,000 or so from the SAB or SBA Utility Fund, and to explore water from wells.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Okay.
The SAB committee would have to be convened in order to look at that, but I believe what Mr. Walterstorf is saying is that it would be an exploration. So, this 650 is not allocated, it's not approved, it is total exploratory at this point.
Anything we, anything we say tonight still has to go to the full council, so it's just what our thought processes are for right now. Mr. Walterstorf, did you want to weigh in? Okay, Richie Nordstrom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to be supporting the motion as presented, but I just have a couple of questions for, let me start with Roger Teller Hughesen, if I may. On your fundraising source that you have out there with Abbey Group, and I've heard some good things about them and their exploration, have they consulted with you about doing something very similar to what Main Street Square did with selling a brick? Have you considered doing something like selling a portion of an acre, something along that line? You know, do you understand what I'm saying? They've put a brick out there and have you considered something like that? Yep.
Yep, I understand completely, and thank you. What I can tell you, Councilman, is that we are exploring all of the opportunities and options, from naming trees to naming benches to any of those ideas. We've talked about all of them, and we're putting all of that together in our fundraising plan. We just haven't actually pulled the trigger and gone out and started soliciting donations for those types of things as of yet. But that will be happening very soon.
And, thank you, Roger. Let's see, Mr. Walterstorf, you made a comment here about this is a bare bones project where we're at right now. Will this 650,000 assist in coming forward with that, in the exploration of the use of the 650,000?
I guess it'll give us an opportunity to explore that in a little more detail. It could very well be that, when we get into the details, that the water supply at that location, because we're getting far enough away from the hills, the water's at an elevate, at a depth, it's just not cost-effective to use it. That's very possible. We, we just haven't investigated it at that day, at that detail.
Understand. Hopefully, we, this will enable you to go in a direction that will give you the opportunity to explore it.
It will.
It will, thank you. I'll yield the floor.
Okay, Mr. Wright?
Now that the motion's been clarified, I understand it better, in that we would have approximately $4.4 million funded, correct? On top of the, well, 650,000 plus the 3.8, 4.4 million total, with 2012 money and the SAB money, correct? And we're going to use that 650,000 to, on the SAB, to construct the water line, which is 637, 232, whatever it is, correct?
Potentially.
And then the balance left would be for exploration of wells that, the Madison Formation out there, I believe, is about 3,000 feet.
It is.
Or more.
It is.
And it's hot water.
It's warm by the time you get out. I don't know what the temperature is, but it's definitely getting warm by the time you get out there.
I just want to ask a question. I'm going to support this, but let's just not do something that's going to get us in trouble. Would we be better off putting that 650,000 into a sanitary sewer, because you're now committing to a holding tank and transporting sewage on a daily or a weekly basis? That's not going to be cheap either. Correct?
I believe that's, that's a cost that the Soccer Association has reviewed and they're willing to undertake at this point.
What, you have a ballpark, the water line, $637,000, is the sewer line approximately the same? I'm surprised someone didn't have that number at the tip of their.
It's probably not far off from that.
I'm surprised someone didn't have that on the tip of their tongue. I would really like to see that sanitary sewer in there and fix those costs, and groundwater could be looked at later.
Yeah, part of the problem with the sewer main out there is that we're starting to get into the roadway itself, a lot more road improvements, and that's what drives the cost up. We have limited right-of-way out there.
Okay, then I'm going to, is, we're going to make a decision here from a policy standpoint. Director of Public Works, is this the best thing to do?
Based on the funding we're given, yes, I believe it is. I think the recommendation that's in front of you, the motion, is probably the best avenue.
From a funding standpoint, is that the best option from the standpoint of utilization of our money and getting them a structure that will fully function?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and I appreciate Alderman Wright's concern with the sewer. I know that every time I've ever been to any of these larger facilities for any kind of tournament whatsoever, it seems that porta potties are usually the method of everybody taking care of that kind of issue, I guess. I'm sorry, I'm a little daft today. But I do want to thank, I forgot to thank the mayor, too, for his input into this problem. I did have a little bit of an issue with it earlier today, and he was good at working this out and helping us make this come to fruition and working with Terry and the rest of staff. So, just want to acknowledge that, and thank you, sir, and move forward and look forward to getting this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. I'm sorry. Okay, well, we have a motion on the floor to move forward with the plan as described, plus adding or exploring the potential for S, say it's SAB? Twenty-eight. Utility Fund and exploring the water wells. Some version of that, anyway, that Charlene has. Oh, I see, Mr. Wright has requested the floor again. Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Any limitations or guidance on the exploration process?
I would just, I would say we'd probably explore that through committee, and I don't believe we have to make that decision right now. They want to move forward and put the seeds in the ground, because it's a two-year process, I believe, for them to be able to play. I know it's not the ideal way to proceed, but we're a family, and sometimes family patch things together, bit by bit, to work till we get, to get where we want to go.
$664,000 patch, though. I want to make sure it goes in the right direction, yeah. I just want to make sure it's, you know, I would really look at a hydrogeologic survey and come back to this group or somebody and get a real physical analysis out quick, but thank you.
Okay, Ms. Scott?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've been keeping my mouth shut and letting the conversation go on up here, so now I'm going to clarify. Terry, if you wouldn't mind making sure that I'm on track here. The motion on the floor is to approve this project to go forward using 16-inch pipe that's going to be laid out hopefully by some other fund, because the soccer field is not going to be the only ones tying into this pipe. That's what the discussion of looking for an alternate source, is that there will be other people in the future tying into this pipe. So, this pipeline would be available for them to start their irrigation and get their fields seeded, correct?
That's correct.
And then with the exploration of being able to use other funds in order to get the 16-inch pipe of treated water to the site that other tenants or other property owners will be able to tie into in the future. The vision funds that are left over, the 600 and some odd, will be able to be used to explore the possibility, if it's at all possible, to actually use well water or untreated water in order to irrigate going forward once it becomes plausible. Correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nordstrom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I can raise a comfort level here for my co-councilman, Alderman Wright. Terry, were you, have you got any information on holding tanks for sanitary sewer around the city that we've used in the past? Are you experienced with those that we've used?
They're not uncommon. I don't have any detailed information on other ones in the city.
And I'm probably being unfair on being asking the question, because when Cheyenne Boulevard was getting constructed, we had to put a holding tank out there, and we had to have that sewer service contracted out, and that was tremendous. And that was a tremendous amount of difference between that holding tank out there then versus what we have to potentially install up here at the soccer fields. And that was handled very well out there by the crews that were involved with that, and the contractor that did that. So, just so I can alleviate some concern for Alderman Wright's area on a sanitary sewer, the holding tanks do work, and with the accessibility or the use by the soccer field, and there's no way going to be close to what we were experiencing out on Cheyenne Boulevard. Thank you. I'll yield the floor.
Okay, thank you. Let's get our voting done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Okay, move on to number seven, Mr. Ben Snow with Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Hello, everybody. On the agenda should have been attached a memo, which essentially summarizes all of the activity of every disbursement made back, beginning in 2012, and there were a couple of projects that had amendments to them that continued into 2013. But I just wanted to highlight a few of these, so that you can catch the gist of it, and reaffirm our commitment to this program as being vital towards economic development and creating tools that we can use to retain and help companies to expand into our community. You can see from these five companies that are listed here, it represents a good cross-section of industries and types of project as well. These five projects, to date, employ close to six hundred people in our community from those jobs that have been retained, and we expect that the ones that are still under construction, or that will be continuing to expand, to add another three hundred and fifty-six positions over the next couple of years. Those five hundred and ninety-six individuals that are employed, being conservative, are at a payroll of nearly twenty-four million dollars, and the capital expenditures that have been deployed with these five projects approach twelve million dollars. So I just wanted to recap that, to let everybody know that the program is working, in our opinion. We think it's a wonderful tool for economic development. We hope to see it perpetuated long into the future. I'll be available for any questions later.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Snow. Next, Skyline Wilderness Park.
Madam Chair, council members, I'm Tim Raven. I'm past president of the Black Hills Runners Club, and I believe we have a short PowerPoint for you to try to give you an update of where we are. Let's see if we can back that up just one. What you're looking at is, what you're looking at is the boundaries of Skyline Wilderness Park. Just as a reminder, Skyline Wilderness Park is a hundred and fifty acres, actually now more than that, that straddles Skyline Drive. This park, in 2007, was transferred to the city from the Skyline Drive Preservation Incorporated, and it was transferred to be preserved as a wilderness area for public recreation. To advance that goal, then, the city prepared a trails plan. 2010, we approached then 2012 funding to implement that trail plan. On its approval, then, that is what we are in the process of accomplishing to date. The black lines are the boundary of the park, that's the hundred and fifty acres. If you look sort of in the middle of the page, up there at the top on the left-hand side, you'll see Fulton Street. Well, we got to get down on that one. You'll, you'll see Fulton Street up there, that's that red star. Fulton Street is a new added portion, about three acres that have been added to the park. And then also on the southeast side, you'll see a yellow star down in the right-hand corner there, and that yellow star is alongside St. Patrick Street, is another addition that's been made to the park since our presentations in 2010. So this park, although it's in the middle of the town, it has limited access to the public, because there are really no defined trail systems, and there's no directions on how people can navigate themselves through the park. So the plan is to increase this public park's access to the public, and to increase recreational This project, you have a written report on this project. It contributes both from, or all three, civic improvement, economic development, and municipal infrastructure. Economic development, we think, is important, because we have learned from the Hanson Larson complex, that these complexes with hiking and biking trails draw businesses, they're now a popper complexes, there are office complexes, there's dwellings over there alongside that park, and those decisions were influenced by the availability of the park. We think that'll be repeated. There are plenty of tourists that now come because they want to actually experience something, they want outdoor recreation, and having this unique facility right smack in the middle of the city should draw those visitors to western South Dakota, to Rapid City. So the plan was a ten miles of trail, and although that was to increase public access, the side benefits are that with a defined trail system, if there were a medical incident in this park, the emergency medical services could readily get to that incident, and so it is with the fire department as well. If there were a fire in this park with a defined trail system, the fire department would readily be able to deploy people. Trails today are a mass of trails that go every which direction, many of them across private property. This system would then eliminate that. We would reduce a lot of the redundancy of trails up there today. We would be able to steer people away from sensitive areas in that wilderness park and reclaim those sensitive areas. And because the plan calls for developed, sustainable trails, it also would mitigate many of the erosion problems that are being experienced up there today. So Phase One has roughly been completed. You're looking at trail that exists up there. This trail was made possible by South Dakota Recurational Trails Grant, and so that had to be completed by the end of 2012. It has been done. The city has made a complete resource inventory of this park, so we're now at a point where the next phase is utilizing the vision funds to accomplish now come to play. The plan calls for three trailheads that will have parking, and four trailheads that will only be pedestrian and bike. I'm going to quickly go through these, but it'll give you an idea of where these trailheads will be and what's involved. Fulton Street, which was a recent addition to the park, is on the west side of the park, and would give us great access from the west side. It also has the double benefit that the city can put marked bike lanes and signage, and easily connect the wilderness trails to the bike path. You'll see that this is a parking lot on this side, we'll landscape it to screen it from our neighbors, it'll have restroom facilities and trail signage. The next one that I'll highlight here is Foreman Street. Foreman Street is at the south side of the park. You can see where it is, it's at the intersection of Foreman and Skyline Drive, and it's on the south side there. Today, you have parking on the west side of Skyline Drive, right on the shoulder there, and with this parking lot, with marking for pedestrians to cross the street. We'd be able to eliminate a lot of that, but people still would be able to get to the overlook. And then other marking to allow access to the trail system itself. Again, signage here. And in the middle of all of this, between Skyline Drive and between Foreman Street, there is the petrified forest area. That petrified forest area is currently a gravel pullout, doesn't accommodate many cars. We would alter that to accommodate more cars. This is a great access point to the trail system, and if you haven't been there, you should go look at all the petrified wood that is in that area. Nonetheless, it would operate to move people from parking in Dinosaur Park to utilize the trails out to this site, and people parking this site also could use the gossage overlook there as well. The other, I'll quickly go through these others. The others are the pedestrian and bike entrance only. Many of them would be improved to allow vehicle access with city vehicles for maintenance or any reason to access those areas. So we would have one at St. Cloud Street, if you're familiar with that, it's quite congested. This would relieve some of that congestion and specify it only as pedestrian and bike. Cyril Court is on the west side. It's actually, I think it's right off of Foreman Street, actually, on the west side. It currently has very poor signage. There is trail access there, but that would have to be improved, and we would also want to have vehicle access for city vehicles on the west side as well. Then South Street, if you're familiar with that, if you were just to go up South Street right into Skyline, then you would go up the hill right up to Dinosaur Park, so that trail would be put in, signage, and so forth, again, bike, pedestrian. And finally, St. Patrick Street, this is the area that was just transferred over to the city and added to the park. That, too, would have vehicle access for the city, but would be only bike and pedestrian for citizens. So here, you've seen this before in the original presentations of the costs of the various pieces. The trailhead development, five hundred and ten thousand, the trail development, four hundred and nineteen thousand, that's nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand. If any of you are remembering the original presentations, this number was higher, but we've utilized the state funds to begin building the trails, so that now no longer is a needed expense. And then you can see the available funding, the nine hundred and twelve, six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from Vision Fund, and then Parks Department still has almost seventeen thousand available. So we would have the funding to cover all of this project in Skyline Wilderness and open that public park to the public and visitors to western South Dakota. And I'll be available to answer questions. Oh, I will show you one more thing. There is the proposed completion dates for the trailheads, August first, 2014, and the entire ten miles, December first, 2014. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the Mental Health Collaborative.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the council. Alan Solano, I'm the CEO of Behavior Management Systems, and representing the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Collaborative. Do have a short PowerPoint that I'd like to bring up and go through with you. As that comes up, the collaborative is really a community effort, and we have over forty organizations within Rapid City and the surrounding communities that make up our collaborative. We operate, although Behavior Management Systems does the day-to-day operations, we're managed really through a steering committee that consists of myself, Sandy Deagle with the John T. Vekurvich Foundation, Rita Haxton with Rapid City Regional Hospitals Behavioral Health, Karen Romi with Pennington County Health and Human Services, Jim Castleberry with The Mission, Tim Tredart with Community Health Center of the Black Hills, and then Sheriff Kevin Tome and Chief Steve Allender. So, again, very much into the community collaborative piece. Let's see if we can get the presentation to come up. I provided some background information, just knowing that there are some new people on the council since the project was approved, but it really came back to some data we were seeing back in 2007 through Community Needs Assessment, the mayor's Strengthening Families Task Force, and actually, the number of completed suicides that we're seeing in Rapid City and the surrounding area. So we formed this collaborative in 2009 to start looking at this. And, again, this just shows you a picture of the organizations that we have that serve on the collaborative. Again, just a wide range of both private nonprofits, community agencies, governmental agencies that provide the services for us. What we had determined is the need for crisis services in Rapid City. Historically, if, you're in great shape if you had a mental health or substance abuse crisis between eight AM and five PM, Monday through Friday. The problem was, when the crisis happened outside of that time, really, the alternative that you had was going to the emergency room, and then over to the Rapid City Regional Hospitals Behavioral Health Facility. So we really wanted to improve that access. And to do that, we were seeking out a way of being safe and confidential for individuals that were in crisis, being able to do the twenty-four hours, seven days a week, face-to-face qualified mental health professional services. Being able to do that crisis intervention assessment, doing observation, doing some medical triage, along with follow-up care and case management. And the case management is the key piece. When you look at what drives mental health and substance abuse crises, so often, it deals with things that are outside of the mental health and substance abuse field. Has to do with housing situations, has to do with financial, transportation, those kinds of things that keep people from actually accessing the proper care. And so we want to use community partners to provide this service. Give you an idea of what we have going on now is, there's a partnership with Behavior Management Systems, Lutheran Social Services, Catholic Social Services, City-City Alcohol and Drug and Youth and Family Services, where we each take one day a week, where we offer an hour of service at no cost, so that there's an immediate, the ability to get a direct referral from the Crisis Care Center into outpatient counseling. So that type of collaboration's going on. We've done quite a bit of fundraising to date. You can see that we've had some major funders with Regional Health, of course, with the City Rapid City's Vision 2012, John T. Vekurvich Foundation, and the others. So we're at two point six million raised to date. What we have is a, also the Pennington County Commission, that is working on developing a sustainability program of creating a one million dollar reserve. To date, there's seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, you can see, that's been allocated, as well as lots of in-kind contributions from the community partners, and hours and hours of meetings and doing that work, as well as Rapid City Regional Hospital donating space for us. To give you an idea of what's been happening over the last two years, you can see in the number of clients served by the Crisis Care Center in the first year, six hundred and twenty-three, and in the second year, a thousand and eighteen. The key to look at here is, when you look at the last few months of the calendar year and going into January, is where we saw the big jump, averaging closer to about a hundred people that are coming in per month. Our goal is to try and get that to about one hundred and twenty that would be coming in per month into the Crisis Care Center. You see the average length of stay that people spend, it went from about ten point two, nine hours in the first year, we're sitting at nine point seven one. People can come to the Crisis Care Center for up to twenty-four hours. If they need more than twenty-four hour care, then we really need to look at them being in an inpatient facility such as Rapid City Regional Behavioral Health Unit. The types of services, we provide medical triage, mental health, crisis assessment, observation. We do chemical dependency screening and support, community case management, psychiatric consults, and then referrals back to community-based providers. And this just gives you an idea of how that's growing year over year for us. Our referral sources is a key piece. Where you can see Rapid City Police Department, Rapid City Regional Hospital are two major referral sources. You can see how self-referrals are picking up. You may have noticed that there's advertising going on now, talking about the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Collaborative, and the partners in that. We're getting ready to gear up for some TV spots and advertising about the Crisis Care Center specifically. Idea with that is to drive more and more of the referrals from self, family, friends, and then other places in the community. If we can do that, that takes the pressure off Rapid City Police Department, the 911 system, also takes the pressure off the emergency room and the Behavioral Health Center. If we look at the total diversions year over year, you can see from Rapid City Regional Behavioral Health Center, three hundred and thirty-three diversions the first year, five thirty-four the second year, Rapid City Regional's ER system, one seventy-four to two fifty-one. And that, again, is making sure that we have people in the appropriate level of care. Historically- Historically, before the Crisis Care Center, because going to the emergency room or to the Behavioral Health Center was really your only option, nothing was done wrong, it's just it was the option for our public. So now we've provided another option for them. This last statistic is critical. If we look at suicides by year, 1998 through 2012, when we came to the City Council for Vision 2012 Funds, the first year, we were at 2010, and you can see that we hit a high watermark, 28 deaths by suicide in 2010. That very next year, and then in 2012, we've dropped that by about 34%. And that is ultimately the payoff that we have for providing this kind of service in the Rapid City community. We do have some emerging trends. When we look at the numbers of clients, we've seen an increase in the last six months versus the first six months of 30%. I'm anticipating we're going to see, year over year, about a 30% increase, again, going through 2013. Our referral sources, you can see, through RAPC Police Department, has increased, again, the first six months, looking at the last six months, 54%. A statistic that's important, RAPC Police Department, Pennington County Sheriff's Department go through a 40-hour training called, it's CIT, Crisis Intervention Team Training. Our law enforcement is, I think, now over 70% that are trained in CIT. Nationally, there's only about 11% of the officers in the United States that are trained in dealing with mental health crisis. So really, big kudos to our law enforcement personnel. Regional Hospital, again, 14% when we're looking six months to six months, but 42% year over year. This just shows you the impact of the CIT training, and then also the diversions year over year. We look at, again, emergency room department, 44% increase, and behavioral health, another 60% increase. We would like to request that we are able to tap into Vision 2012 Funds, looking at January 2014, as when we will need to see that funding come into the system to help deliver the sustainability. With that, I want to thank you, and I'd be happy to stand by for questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, ASA softball?
Thank you, Madam Chair and council. My name's Brad Burns. I'm the Vice President of Rapid City ASA Softball. I wasn't involved when the original Vision 2012 application was made, and I just want to say thank you for supporting this project. Just a little bit about the exciting things that are happening in ASA right now. In 2011, we had 571 registered softball players. In 2012, we had 631, and this year, we have registered over 700. Part of that, the reason for that increase this year was Rapid City, Little League, didn't have their majors program, and so a lot of those softball players are coming over to ASA. You know, we're excited to have those numbers increase. On the other hand, we really don't have the facilities to really appropriately support those numbers. We're short on practice fields. We've, in the past, all of our games have been on weekdays, weeknights. We didn't have games scheduled for weekends this year with the younger kids, ages six and eight. We're going to have to change that, and we're going to have Saturday games. So, you know, the need for more fields is really, really there. We, this year, after, you know, a lot of previous discussions on a yearly basis with Sioux Falls, with the State ASA Commission, we've finally gotten a State ASAB tournament to come to Rapid City. We, you know, expect, you know, about 30 out-of-town teams, you know, maybe somewhere around 1,300 people for that weekend, maybe more. The, we've also recently been told that Special Olympics are going to hold their state tournament at our fields, as long as we can provide six fields for 2014, 15, and 16. And we are also having, holding the Women's Senior Games softball tournament this year. A little bit about where we are with the project. Could we get the, it's the PDF that's, yeah, we can use that one. The, we've been through the process of hiring the design firm for civil engineering and landscape engineering. We're about 85% into the construction documents. The 85% has been submitted to the city for their review. One of the big things that we ran into on this project, as you'll see in sort of the red-and-white checkered pattern there, is all of that area is considered wetlands, and which you can see we're building right over the top of. I think a long time ago, we thought, well, we can build the new fields to the west of this complex, but then the tennis courts were built there. So we're, in order to keep the fields on this site, we had to build those to the south. Because of the wetlands, we, that takes a submittal and review by the Corps of Engineers. That plan has been submitted to the state, and the state and the feds will review that. And we don't, because of the length of that process, we don't expect, or we're, you know, conservatively expecting that we'll get an answer on the mitigation plan in August, possibly The design team expects that their drawings will be, would be ready for bidding, probably in May, but because of this process that we have to go to, go through, we won't, it doesn't really do us a whole lot of good to bid the project until we know that we can build the fields here. The wetlands mitigation, I believe, means that for every acre of wetlands that we build over top of or remove, we have to relocate three acres. So the civil engineer has plans upstream from this, in the detention areas, to replant those, or reestablish those. So the good news is that we're almost done with the design. That's sort of where the good news ends and the bad news starts. And, again, like I said, I wasn't involved in the original proposal, but we are over budget, according to the most recent cost estimate. We've, we're actually probably about, let's, can you go to the, can I do that from here? The cost estimate should be, go forward. Actually, no, I'm sorry, backwards. One more. There you go. Right now, our cost estimate, after taking out bleachers and some of the things that you would normally see in the softball field in a complex, we actually took about $100,000 out of the cost estimate and said, you know, we're going to pay for those ourselves, whether it's raising money or spending what we have. And so we're about, after doing that, we're about $440,000 over budget. So with that, you know, I regretfully am asking for another $440,000 to add to the Vision Fund allocation. And I don't take that lightly. I know in my proposal, I was running out of time, and I added that in the back. And I just, not necessarily optimistic about it either, but hope you consider helping us out a little more. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The 50-meter pool, leisure pool, field house.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Council. I had the privilege of coming for this group in February, so my report's going to be rather short. The project, the schedule, and the approved budget is all online, just like we talked about in February. Just to let you know, though, we have started the process of design for the 50-meter pool down at Roosevelt. And we are looking at, the schedule is looking at trying to break ground this summer, of course, to be, have that pool open and ready for the 2014 summer. So, other than that, I will answer questions later, if anybody has any.
Okay, thank you. Canyon Lake Dam reconstruction.
The next two items are mine, so real briefly on Canyon Lake Dam. You guys awarded the construction contract last council meeting, so things are proceeding on that. That should be under construction after Labor Day in September sometime, and should be wrapped up, hopefully, early summer of 2014.
Okay. Do you have Mount Rushmore Road corridor also?
Yeah, Mount Rushmore Road, you guys saw the memo that was attached. I'll just go through that real briefly with you guys. The timing on that, the phasing on that particular project has been adjusted a little bit by the DOT, as I mentioned in the memo. Phase one, from Tower Road down to Foreman Street, will be constructed in 2014. You'll actually, if things go as planned, you should see some private utility relocate starting in 2013, this fall, not this summer, but it'd be late fall when we start there. Need to get those utilities out of the way, so when we get ready to do the bigger underground utilities and the roadway, they're out of the way. Foreman over to St. James Street, what happened in 2015, and then St. James down to Kansas City Street in 2016. And as far as budget estimates, right now, I'm hopeful that we're on budget with this. That's the goal, and that's the plan. You guys allocated about 5.1 million total for the project. Keep in mind, Vision Fund had it still in two phases, so I'm kind of looking at it as one pot of money, even though we know it's split into two different calendar years. We think we'll spend about 300,000 on engineering. The decorative lights, ballpark, right now, we're estimating about 700,000. For burying the overhead power lines, that'll be anywhere from 2.5 million up to 3.3 million. The difference there, that 800,000, depends on how many of the, what I call the perpendicular crossings get put underground. There's, I think, four of them from South Street north to Main Street. They're a sizable investment to put those underground, so we're going to probably propose, those can be dropped underground at any time, even after the project. We'll probably hold off on that until we get further into the project and we see where we are budget-wise. Those are some that we may leave overhead. But I don't think those perpendicular crossings are quite as a visual scar on the corridors as the other overhead lines that run parallel with it. Some of the side street parking issues, we're estimating about 100,000, just to bring you up to speed on that. We did hold a public, all right, open house, public open house last week. We'd sent out mailers to the property owners fronting on the project that are impacted by that parking change that you guys approved here several months ago. I had some good comments from the property owners, so we're still working through that process. Some of our final decisions depend a little bit on final designs from the DOT, and they haven't really finalized all those yet, particularly in that area on the east side of the road from Clark to south. There's still some, that row of homes there, we eliminated, I think, 22 parking spots. That's the one that we aren't totally sure where we're going to go yet, depending on some design issues with the DOT. So we'll continue to work through that in the next few months here. And based on the 5.1 million, that leaves us about 700,000 up to 1.5 million for the beautification. That sounds like a lot, but we can burn through that pretty quick on a corridor this long, so that's where we are.
Okay, thank you. Now, energy plant update. Save the best for last.
Gunnard Centares, City School Common Energy Plant Manager. My summary is, you should have my summary electronically in front of you. If you don't have it, I've got copies.
We should, we should all have it. Thank you.
This is pretty much a short and sweet discussion. This project has been notably marred by being on time, being under budget, and having a minimal amount of change orders.
That's the way we like it.
I'll just briefly go down this one-page summary that you've got. Under schedule, energy plant systems, the boilers, pumps, and controls are all 100% operational and installed. The cooling system, which is by contract is scheduled to be online, started by April 1st, is online. The only holdup there is we need some warm weather, because we have to test it properly. We have to have some cooling load. So that, the systems and controls are installed, the controls still have, there are a few controls left to be installed, but the only thing holding us up there will be the weather. The civic center systems, the heating system is 100% installed. The cooling system is 100% installed. There are a few controls that remain to be done there, but those are on schedule to be done by April 1st. The overall project, as I stated earlier, is on time and under budget and scheduled to be completed by April 30th. For the most part, other than some control things and some startup things, it's mostly odds and end finishes. As far as the budget is concerned, the overall budget was, low bid was $5 million, and was awarded to MAC Construction, which, if you don't know or weren't aware, Skull Construction, they actually were tied for the low bid on the project, and they basically chose contractors by picking names via an envelope. by picking names via an envelope. The change orders are $75,000 scheduled for change orders in that $5 million, and of that $75,000, the change orders have amounted so far to $40,900. Now, there'll probably be a few more change orders added to that, but that'd be pretty minimal. And so far, the, or, so far, MAC has been paid $4,521,000 and some odd dollars. So we have approximately another $450,000 in round numbers left to, to pay them, or, you know, that would go there the general, so. And that amount, that $5 million is split 50/50 between the vision fund and the Rapid City Schools. So Rapid City Schools really is the holder of all the bid documents and the administrator of the project, and they've been billing the city for their half. So the city's half of that would be $2.5 million. Now, the energy plant controls, to get more of a competitive bid, we bid those separately from the main project, and those came in at, the low bid was to G&amp;R Controls at all round numbers, $275,000. And of that, they've, they've been paid $234,000 and $400 in round numbers. That total, just like the energy plant, the main project, is split 50/50 between the vision fund and the Rapid City Schools. And the other part, the last part of the project, civic center controls, which are paid entirely by the vision fund, because that's just in the, the city part, that total is, was, by G&amp;R Controls, was $58,655, and a total of $47,350 is, about $350 has been paid on that. The school, it had some work done over at Central High School. I didn't include that in any of these figures, because that's entirely out of their budget and is paid separately from the vision fund. And that's it. Any questions?
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, now we, it's time for discussion. Yeah, Gunnar, we'll take, we'll find out here in a little bit, if you wanna go ahead and have a seat.
Okay.
We'll do it the same way we did before, if we want to have any questions, to pull the item off that you have questions or comments about. Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to pull item number 10, AS softball.
Okay, softball. Number nine, let's see, Ryan?
Item number nine.
Okay. Richie, oh, Steve?
I'm on.
Okay. Jerry? So we've pulled Skyline Wilderness Park, the Mental Health Collaborative, and the softball. Okay?
I don't think so.
It's already been done.
Probably out having a cigarette or something.
Okay, we'll pull it, just so you can ask your question to Pauline, or, okay. Okay. So we'll have a motion to acknowledge number seven, 12, 13. Oh, we scratched that one out, okay. Seven, 11, 12, and 13. Okay, Doyle, and Louis second. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Okay, motion carries. Okay, number eight, Skyline Wilderness Park. And Jerry, is that Mr. Wright?
Yes, I only had one question. Tim, on trailhead number two.
Yes.
And Jeff, in that very immediate area, if there's something that could be done, that part of the roadway and that rock wall just immediately west of where that trailhead two is going in, I believe, is pretty poor shape. Is there any way we can address cleaning that up at the same time or close to it? You know what I mean? I mean, the rock wall's been.
Yeah, it's that overlook that's just to the west side of where we're planning the trailhead.
If there's any way that we could, I'm just gonna ask, if there's any way we could put some effort into repairing that wall and cleaning up that parking area, it'd be great. Because if we don't, it's sure gonna look bad for the other side. And that's all. And otherwise, I'm all for it.
If I may address that, Jerry. Madam Chairman, we can definitely look at that. That was kinda one of the reasons we located that parking lot where we did. We'd have to work with Public Works on that, because that, that is in the road right of way, and see what accommodations we can make. But that, that can be something we look at as we get into design of that parking lot.
Thank you very much. Mr. Nordstrom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Raven, thank you very much for being involved in the community and all the other activities that you do around the community. Thank you very much. Tim knows about what I'm referring to, his assistance he gave as leadership on the Journey Museum Executive Director position, so thank you, Tim. I really appreciate your help and support on that. Tim, I just wanted to make sure that you got a special invitation on, to a group that's called Pioneering for Healthy Communities. This Wednesday, we've got a subcommittee that's called the Health Impact Assessment Group, and I would very much appreciate if you had the opportunity to attend their eight o'clock meeting this Wednesday, to give just a brief presentation on this project to that group. I think it's one of the things that this committee has been looking at to do citywide, so.
That's 8:00 PM, and where are they meeting?
Eight AM, eight AM.
Eight AM.
Yep, eight AM, at the YMCA Church.
AM.
Yep. Yeah, no, it's me, too.
Okay, that's at the YMCA?
Afterwards, when I wake up, bring the coffee. The, yeah, it's at the YMCA Church, eight AM, and, yeah, if we can just get in a little bit of a brief presentation of what you've got, because I think this is very, very beneficial to the community as well.
Overhead will be available for the PowerPoint?
Yep.
Not a problem, we'd be glad to do it.
I will alert Mary on it, so that she has a heads-up. Thank you, Tim, and I appreciate all your help on everything. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yield the floor.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, can I get a motion to acknowledge? Okay, Doyle moved, and was that Clayton, second? Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Mental Health Collaborative, questions, that, Mr. Wright?
Just wanna clarify, this $500,000, Al, that is an operational subsidy type, is not, not building anything, is that correct?
No, not building anything. Building the capacity to serve, doing the crisis care services, so. Facility that we have is donated by Rapsody Regional Hospital on the second floor of the behavioral health facility.
And was that a $100,000 over five years? Is that how that was paid out?
You know, it was never, it was never designated that way, so we've just left that open. What we've been doing is trying to use what we've, what we've had available from private donations, from various foundations, as well as other funding sources through insurances, Medicaid, and even the state of South Dakota, to fund things first, before we've tried tapping into the funds from the city, as well as then also funds from the county. So really looking at, at the local government agencies as, as the last resort for where we're gonna go to for money.
Go ahead and continue, Mr. Wright, I'm sorry I interject.
I applaud the efforts that you're doing. I know the military's had the similar issues with suicides, and I think anything we can do to help it, I'm just a little concerned, what are we gonna do on a long-term basis to address the many, many issues, and this is just one, that we're not handling. So I look forward for future discussions and development, okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Doyle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question for the finance officer, if I may.
Sure. Pauline?
You hanging in over there? All right. Question for you, I'm looking at this, it looks like half a million had already been approved for 2013. Because it's a substantial amount, can you refresh my memory on, on what kind of a breakdown it is as far as payments of that half a million goes? How it's allocated, or how it's actually delivered?
Actually, in this case, it's different than the community investments, where we do one-twelfth, if it were this large. Typically with the vision funding, because the money is already there, we just typically cut the check as long as they can produce where, in other instances, where they've built something, they give us the, a copy of the receipt, then we reimburse them, that type of thing. We typically don't give money upfront. I would envision with the Mental Health Collaborative that we would have some kind of agreement with them prior to releasing of the funds, and, but I would defer that one actually to the city attorney, if, if he feels that the, an agreement is, is needed in that respect.
Mr. Solano?
Madam Chair, we certainly would be amenable, if, if it makes sense to do it as a one-twelfth type of payment, and do that through the calendar year 2014, if that's more in what the, what the process or, or the protocol has been in the past.
I'll interject, what I'm looking at is that you've already been approved for half a million. What we're seeing on this condensed spreadsheet, okay, it's for 2013, you keep talking 2014, we're looking for updates. So my question is, we're not taking additional requests today, that would have to go through an entire, the whole process again, of the, the vision committee meetings and deciding and.
Correct, but this has already been approved, and I believe that's what Mr. Solano's been referring to, is the same $500,000.
But you do not have it yet.
Correct. We've not, we've not requested those funds be released at this time.
Correct.
Okay, so they're 2013 funds, so I'll just make sure we're talking apples and apples.
Okay.
What's the process we need to go through to actually disperse those funds?
Typically, a request would have to come in, and if Mr. Solano's looking at 2014, then, and if that's when you really do come in and request the funds, we would have to do a carryover with a budget supplement in 2014, to take that $500,000 out of the 13 budget and bring it into the 14 budget, and then we would just need the request for funds. And again, we may need an agreement with the Mental Health Collaborative, or, you know, there's the community investment groups, we don't have an agreement, we just say, this is what we're gonna fund you, and we give you one-twelfth at this level, so.
So what kind of a motion would you need for tonight?
Just to acknowledge, really.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ellen.
Okay, Mr. Sasso.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of questions for you. One thing I know, just having toured up there and, and seen other presentations, I think it would be beneficial for everybody to understand how much, actually, how much money is being saved. And I know it's, it's, it's a tough one to pin down, but, but as far as how much money is being saved, perhaps per person, or however you wanna break that down, with this crisis diversion.
Certainly, Madam Chair.
Please.
Thank you for the question. It is hard to tell, and it's, there's, but, what we associate costs with is that if a person's going into the emergency room, we estimate that's going to be about a $600 charge. And of course, that can go higher, it can go lower, but we're averaging $600 for that. If they're admitted into the behavioral health facility, we estimate that to be a $1,000 charge. So when you look at the diversion numbers that were on the, on the sheet, what the county has projected their savings to date is in excess of a million dollars that they've saved in the two years. There's other costs that we really are not accounting for, because if a person goes through an involuntary commitment, there's state's attorney costs, there's the county board of mental illness, there's hearing costs, those types of things that, that get paid for. The, the real savings, though, is if we can get people into services before they reach that point of contemplating suicide, or actually attempting suicide, that's where you really, you know, how do you measure that, that cost or that savings? You know, one life, 10 lives, as well as just what the medical costs are when somebody makes an attempt, and, and what that, that costs. So those are really difficult to try to, to come up with, how that's, how that's saving the, the citizens, as well as the systems in, in the area, money.
So that, that, actually, that, that helped, because I knew, I've, I've heard some of the figures previously, and I, I figured that's a good thing to have people be aware of. The other, I guess, the other question I have is regarding the crisis diversion because of the case management and so forth. The recidivism rate, as far as people coming back, is that, is that pretty low now, or are you seeing a lot of?
It's, it's an interesting thing, because you have a number of folks in, in the area that historically were, were going 20, 30 times into inpatient care per year. So those folks, even though we may see them come into the crisis care center often, we see that as a good thing, because we're still diverting them from ending up in the emergency room and ending up in the, the behavioral health center. So we, we kinda look at recidivism a little differently. You know, I'd rather have, have them come back to the crisis care center frequent, if that's the level of care that we can provide them, services, versus them going into the emergency room and into the behavioral health center.
And otherwise, you know, the numbers, the numbers, you know, as far as suicide, definitely improvement, and I think one of the things, even though those figures may change, I think it's important, too, to understand that that's considering the economy and a lot of stressors, and we're seeing a reduction.
Absolutely, and a lot of that's public education, and, and it's not just because of the crisis care center. The work that the Front Porch Coalition and what have you's been doing with, doing the trainings out there and creating public awareness is critical.
Yes, and everybody should attend those, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ellen, if I may, I was rather amazed, when you put the chart up on suicides by year, some wide vacillations in those numbers, and it looked like we were on a pretty dramatic upstring, upswing, 2008 through 2010, and a rather remarkable downswing then in 11 and 12. Is there something more or different that we as a community could do to help keep those numbers moving downward?
I think there's a few things that, as a community, the, the education piece is critical. So supporting, we've gotta support the assist trainings and the Safe Talk trainings that are out there, to help the common person when they encounter somebody that has made mention of that they're thinking about suicide. How do you respond? Because that's a, that's a very difficult position for an individual to be in that's not been trained. How do you respond to that person that has, has given some indication? So that type of training is critical, and the more we can do to support that publicly, the better. And then just the anti-stigma. Mental health and, and mental illness still carries a tremendous stigma with that. I, I always like to say to people, we look at the most complex organ in the body as your brain, and yet we're amazed that it has complications and has health issues. It just doesn't make sense, and, and then we look at diabetes and, and cholesterol, and that's just normal for people. Well, we should expect the fact that a complex organ, such as the brain, is going to have illnesses, health issues, and there's things we can do to, to make it more healthy.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wright.
Just emphasize the complexity of the issue. You answered the question about recidivism or returns, but how do you help the patients? Do you buy their meds, which I think that, that could be a thousand dollars a month, if I remember right? And then you also have medical staff, you pay for the doctors that help, correct? And then do you establish long-term medication, or what do you do? Can you?
Well, Madam Chair, thanks for the question. Medications is a very important part. Now, what I would say is that not everybody wants to go on a medication, and so we really work with them through the, through the assessment and case management, to determine, you know, what is it that they need, and the referral to a psychiatrist to get onto a medication regime. And then, you're right, psychiatric medications are very, very expensive, and it's not uncommon to see one cost a thousand dollars per month. We have staff within behavior management systems, where we work with the, with the pharmaceutical companies to get a free. companies to get a free psychotropic medications. And just to give you an idea, Councilman Wright, we, in the last year, had in excess of a million dollars in free medications that we were able to provide through patient assistance programs in Rapid City.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to weigh in on this too, that this is money, because these people, obviously it helps save, keep families intact, but also to keep these citizens productive and make them safer for everybody else, and reduces our cost. And so this is really an example of a program, and I think Mr. Sasso touched on this, that you really get a big bang for your buck, as far as the impact and make us all healthier here, so, thank you very much. So, do we have a motion? Okay. Sasso, were you the second initially? Okay. Those in favor? Those opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'm gonna skip down to the energy plant, so that Gunar can go, because I think the softball's gonna take a little bit of time. I just have that feeling about softball. Okay, Mr. Roberts, do you have a question for...
Thank you, Council President.
For Centaur's.
Gunar. Looking at these numbers that you came up, it looks like the energy plant came in quite a bit lower than we were expecting.
That's correct.
So what are you anticipating we're gonna have leftover going back into the vision fund?
Well, we initially, well, that's all the numbers that were pulled from the vision fund were the $5 million plus $275,000 plus $60,000, so, let's see, that'd be $5,335,000, if I'm adding those up, right? So those, the only numbers going back really is what's left in the contingency, which was a total of $75,000.
Looking at your numbers, though, I thought there was a 50-50 split between the city and the school.
That's correct, I forgot about the split.
Because originally, we'd allocated $3.5 million from the vision fund itself, and if the total project cost, what's the total project cost gonna be, roughly, do you know?
Well, we had budgeted for $7 million, that was our original engineer's estimate from a couple of years ago. So now we're at $5,335,000, which was the actual bid price, and so you take $2.5 million of the vision fund, plus half of...
$247,000, plus we have to add back in $54,000 for the controls at the civic center, correct?
Yeah.
So roughly $180,000.
Yeah.
So it'd be 2.68, roughly, say 2.7. So we'll have, Pauline, are my numbers right? We're gonna have about $800,000 left over from the 3.5 million?
I need clarification first. The numbers you gave, does that include the professional services, or is that strictly just the bid number? Because there's professional services too that will be taken out of there.
Oh, that's right, I didn't have, I forgot to add those in, because I didn't have them on the engineer's spreadsheet. So the professional services would be in addition to that.
Do you know what they were roughly? And did we split them 50-50 with the school system too?
I'm assuming those were split 50-50.
Just fishing for money, Pauline, we need some for the softball fields.
Yes, Pauline, should we take a little bit of a recess for you to look at that, or...
Yeah, Alderman, Roberts would have a figure.
Because I think also that we don't know for sure how much is gonna come back, because the project's not completely finished, so...
Just kind of wanted to get a rough estimate.
No, I understand, but...
You know, even if we had $600,000 left over, $500,000 left over...
Or $440,000.
Or $400,000 left over, yeah.
For the professional services? The figure that sticks in my head, it wasn't 10%, I thought it was somewhere between $300,000 and $400,000 for the design fees, but I don't have those figures. Though, the school's got those figures, and they never came across my desk, that's kind of why I spaced it out, so...
But even if it was $400,000, that's only $200,000 on our split, so that's still $600,000.
Right. Does anyone else have other questions? John, did you have another question maybe you could be asking while Pauline's looking? Does anyone else have a question? Okay, I don't think we have any other questions for you at this time. Do we want to take a recess and acknowledge, or should we acknowledge now and let Gunar go? Okay, Mr. Lewis, Laurenti was second. Those in favor say aye, those opposed, same sign? Okay, we'll take a 10-minute recess? I'd just like to have everyone properly motivated. And we will go now to Pauline Sumption, our fantastic finance officer. She has discovered.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If all the numbers that I pulled up out of the IFA system are correct, and everything comes in on budget, it looks like there would be about $474,000 left from this project. We will not know that for sure, though, until the project is complete. I do want to preface it with, or end it with that, so keep that in mind.
And that might be in June. Okay. Softball, I think we're gonna start off right with a question, and I'm gonna precede you with a question, if you don't mind. When are you looking for this extra money? Because you said you had to get some drainage, things worked out first?
Yeah, we would, so far, I think the only, the only cost associated with the project to date are design fees. If we bid the project, you know, I think, hopefully worst case would be, we would bid the project in August, and so we hope to be mostly done with construction by the end of the year, November, something like that. The only thing that we'll probably still need to do would be to plant, or to sod the fields, probably in the spring. We were originally hoping that we would have that all done, have it planted by September, so it'd give us a little bit of growing period. But it's looking like that might not happen. So I think worst case would be around August would be when we'd start needing money for construction.
Okay, so we probably don't really need to identify a funding source, nail one down until then, so... Okay, Mr. Lewis.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to allocate the needed money from the, for the softball fields, from the money referred, do we need to do that now? Contingent upon them, contingent upon the energy plant coming in under budget. I'd like to make a motion to not make a motion, thank you.
Does anyone have questions for our, okay. Mr. Sasso.
Just a question, because knowing you're looking at putting this out to bid, and we, it's possible we may have the money, it's also possible we might not, just as a suggestion or a thought, perhaps looking at bidding it and maybe not incorporating the lights or something, or have an alternate?
Yes.
On the bid? I don't know how you were planning on setting that up.
Madam Chair, that, you know, we want to do a project of some sort. If we, if we were short money, we would certainly, there are things, like you say, the lights, you know, that's about $180,000 there. It would make our fields about two-thirds, you know, functional. There's also been some discussion, I'll probably get hung for this, but there's also a parking lot that's part of this project. It's sort of a joint-use parking lot for the tennis courts, for us, and for the swimming pool, and the city felt that it was important to put that in because of the new fields and possibility of more, you know, more people needing parking spaces. Aside from that, you know, the project is really, like I said, bare bones. We took about $100,000 out, you know, we were hoping for trees, and lighting, and bleachers, and a canopy over the bleachers, but we took those amenities out, and we'll find a way to pay for those.
Thank you.
Ms. Scott.
I'd like to make a motion to continue this item until the next vision fund meeting.
Okay, continue to the next vision fund meeting, and a second by Mr. Roberts. Is there any discussion or more questions? Mr. Wright? Okay, any other? Okay, those in favor of the motion say aye, those opposed, same sign? Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thanks, you everybody. Okay, Scott, Ms. Scott, second, Ms. Doyle's motion, and we are adjourned, and thank y'all very much.